This special board meeting of the Judson Board of Trustees is hereby called to order at 6:30 PM. We are very pleased that you've taken time to join us this evening. We want to extend to each of you a sincere welcome from the entire school board. Thank you for your interest in Judson ISD. We have established a quorum and I will call roll. Ms. Eaton.
Present.
Ms. Bichelle.
Present.
Ms. Canoyer.
Present.
Mr. LaFoyle.
I'm last but the best. Present.
I'm last. Dr. Melinda Salinas. And to my left, we have Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Carl Montoya.
Present.
Thank you. If everyone will please take roll, mark yourselves present.
Oh, forget to tell you, pulling those two.
Right. And we are pulling, for the record, 3A, B, and 4A. A, B, and 4A. So we will move on to item 2A, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Preparation Discussion. Dr. Montoya.
Okay, members of the board, again, this is a continuation of a process that always takes place this time of the year as we prepare for the district budget for next school year. And the goal will be for next Monday to approve the budget for next year, but there have been previous meetings to share information. You have gotten information on Friday newsletters, and this is the next installment of an update. So, Mr. Alisondo, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Montoya. Good evening, board members. As Dr. Montoya mentioned, this is our fifth meeting, I believe, on the budget for the fiscal year 19 budget preparation. And so I'm going to review some of the information that we've shared with you at the last meeting. And this PowerPoint, the first part of it, is basically the identical PowerPoint that we presented at the last meeting with updates for anything, any changes since then. So, I'm only going to highlight a couple of things, and even since the meeting the other day, I've received some additional information that I just want to bring you all, make you all aware of. And at the meeting on Monday, we'll have the final documents which will reflect those changes. Here on the estimated ADA that I'm using, 21,305, the actual ADA for this school year, which is the one that says their estimated ADA for the prior fiscal year, came in at 21,380-something, so about 78 kids more. And so, or 78 ADA more. And so with that, that'll generate approximately another $4,000 to $500,000 for us. So that, that will definitely help our bottom line. It's not going to be reflected here, but I'll mention it again when we get to that in just a minute. So I'm going to, I'm going to go through this rather quickly, so if you have any questions, please stop me. I'm going to go on to the next slide. The items that were changed from the last meeting were, are in yellow, so they're highlighted so I can just kind of highlight those for you. So on, for the General Operating Fund, on the local revenue side, the interest income, we went back to review that, and we determined, based on what we're currently earning and how much money we're forecasting to have next year, every one of the months, that we'll do a little better in earnings. So last meeting, I think, I won't remember these figures for every single one of them, but I think we had budgeted 550,000 for that number, so we increased it another $200,000, and we feel that's a safe number. So, that was a little increase there. On the other, and last column there where it says $600,000, we also, and I said, I'm not going to remember every one of them from last time, but we also increased that number a little bit because we felt like we were also going to generate a little more money in that category and felt comfortable doing that. So now, our local revenue for next year is almost at $100 million, at 99.99 million. I'm going to go on to the next slide. This is the slide for the state revenue for the General Operating Fund. Some changes here. On the, the first number you see there for the comp ed allotment number, when we ran the summary of finances from the state for the last meeting, we used the number that they were using for, to estimate that number, and actually, their number was high. So, when we went back to look to see what our child nutrition department actually reported in kiddos that were eligible for free and reduced lunch, it was lower than what the state was using, so we used those numbers because those are the actual numbers the state will eventually plug into the template. So we lost a little bit of money there compared to what we thought we were going to get the last time we met. And then on, a little bit lower, when you change some of those numbers, and some of the other numbers automatically change, so the Tier 2 and high slash high school allotment monies changed a little bit, not very much, but they did change a little bit. So total state revenue changed to 74.5 million. It was pretty close to that last time. I think it was like at 70, maybe right at under 74 million or something like that in that neighborhood. So total state revenue, including the TRS on behalf, is at 83.2 million or 83.3 million for next school year. And again, once we have, once I input those updated ADA numbers that I told you a minute ago, the 21,000, 21,382, that's going to change these numbers, and we'll pick up, like I said, probably another, close to another half a million dollars. So that bottom line will be, will improve by about half a million dollars. On the federal revenue side, here, what we did was a flip-flop. That $150,000 last meeting was 250, and when we looked at the impact aid that we've been receiving over the past few years, it has been steadily decreasing. So we looked at that category and decreased it by 100,000, and in the same, at the same time, we looked at the other category there with the SHARs and the ROTC, and we noticed that we were receiving a little more money in that category. So, we just reduced the 100,000 in one category and added 100,000 to the other category because we feel we're going to be able to, to generate those funds. So other resources, there's nothing to report for 1819. This is, that 4 million, that 4.4 million dollars this past year was that construction money that we got back for the Veterans Memorial, but we're not going to have anything like that this next year. On the expenditure side, same thing. We went to these numbers, and I'm going to go in a little more detail in a little bit on these, but the new staff upgrades and deletions. HR identified a few other positions that they felt like we could hold on hiring for next year, either for the full year or partial year, so that changed that number a little bit. And like I said, I'm going to review those with you in just a moment because we'll, we have those highlighted as well, what those changes were. So the subtotal for the salaries that we're looking at and benefits is about 159 million for next year. The operating cost also changed a little bit, and I'll review those in a few minutes with you as well in more detail, but it's about 29 million. So, the subtotal for the operating cost, which is that TRS on behalf and that 29 million, is 37.6 million. I keep going to the next slide. Here's where it just kind of shows you a summary of the revenue and expenditures. So for revenue for next school year, we're anticipating approximately 186.8 million. Expenditures, 197 million. So there's a deficit of 10.2 million or almost 10.3 million. Again, we were fortunate that we're able to recover, use some reserve fund balances to help with that, so we had $2 million in the state comp ed mandated program category that we're able to use, so that, we're going to take $2 million from there to help with that because some of those expenditures that are in here are state comp ed expenditures and we're budgeting specifically out of those $2 million. And then, on the unassigned category, it's an insurance claim that you all are familiar with, that we use bond money to pay for the damage to those roofs, so we're leaving that insurance money in the General Operating Fund, and we can use it to help us with this issue. So, right now, our forecast for next year is that we're going to be at a 4.2 million or almost 4.3 million deficit. Again, a minute ago, when I mentioned that we were going to receive a little bit more ADA money from the state, that number then, once we plug that in, will go under the 4 million, so it should be, I'm hoping that the next time we meet, you're going to see probably around a 3.7, 3.8 million number there. As, it's still a huge number, but it's manageable. And, and if you just give one second. And hope, we're still hoping that we'll generate a little more money from the insurance claim for the hell, that will hopefully absorb that entire amount and bring it back to zero by the time we finish with that budget. But I don't want you to please lose, and I know I keep repeating this over and over and over again, the fact that we're $10 million in deficit, and next year, we're not going to have those other funding sources, and so, we're going to have to be really careful. And I know that Mr. Macias asked at the last meeting, and will provide it at the next meeting, a look forward to next year. But I can tell you now, last year, there were a lot of little variables, variables that were in there. We, we've been discussing it, and really, there are not a lot of variables for next year as to what's going to happen, other than the property value that the state uses is going to be moved up. And depending on what our local values are, I think, without any changes in state funding or anything, that the district would be approximately a 13 to 14 million deficit next year to start the year. So there's a lot of work to be done during this next year to make sure that when we get to that point, we've done our best to identify all the possible things that we can eliminate or reduce to be able to lower that number to a more manageable number than that 13 million, because that's just not going to, obviously not going to work. Otherwise, if nothing else were to change, then I don't, once we identify cuts, at some point, the board would have to, I think, be forced to say that we have to go to the voters for a tax ratification election. And that's what we're trying to avoid, but at some point, it may be inevitable that that day will come. Ms. Bichelle, I'm sorry, you were trying to ask a question, and I, keep going.
Just to be clear, so you're saying, out of the, the 17 million for compensatory education, 2 million is going to be taken out of that?
Well, let me kind of explain how that works a little bit. So, 17 million, for instance, is what we're forecasting that we're going to receive in compensatory education for next school year. And we receive those monies every year. There are different amounts of money, but we receive them every year. So what happens is, at the end of the year, we look to see how much money we receive from the state, in this case, let's use the 17 million example, and then we'll say, okay, well, how much money did we actually spend on compensatory education this particular fiscal year? So we'll look at it, and let's say that we spent 12 million. So then, there's a 5 million balance, and we can't use that for anything else other than compensatory education. So in the audit report, when you see the audit report, there is usually a line item where the fund balances are, that'll say reserved or restricted for mandated programs. And there's a number in there, and typically, or has been for the past few years, it's around 4 to 5 million. And that's because every year, in the compensatory education program, we haven't been spending all the money on a yearly basis. And so you have three years to use that money, so you get to use it the year then which you earn it, and then two additional years. So that 2 million, we're pulling it from that 5 million reserve that sits out there, and we're going to use it from that reserve. It's not really coming out of this 17 million. Right. Correct. Right. And you can only do that as long as you have identified compensatory education expenditures. You can't just use it on anything. It has to be specifically for those programs. And so, when we developed this budget, we identified exactly 2 million of additional expenditures that we're going to, that we're going to use those funds for.
All right, thanks, sir.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Alisondo. Some of the other variables for income would possibly maybe be the legislature, as we look at lobbying them for increased support in education. The tax increase, obviously, is, is we have, what is it, we're 1.04, we have until, up to 1.17?
Yes, sir.
In terms of that. And then, enrollment would be yet another variable. If we did see an increase in enrollment at Escondido North or Wortham Oaks, correct?
At any one of our schools. Anywhere district-wide, did we see, did we see growth, we will benefit from additional funding from the state for that growth.
Okay. And then, I guess our continual work in looking at inefficiencies are being more efficient as well. So, so 10 million would then be your safe, or your conservative estimate as what we would look at immediate shortfall for next budget cycle?
I would look at more to 13 to 14 million.
Okay. 13 to 14?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay. I'm going to continue on, if that's okay. All right. The next fund we're going to look at is child nutrition. And again, I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this, but child nutrition, we didn't make any changes at all from the last meeting to this meeting. We will go back and refine them a little bit before the next meeting, before we actually adopt the budget. Just in summary there, the majority of the funds come from the federal programs that we do the free and reduced lunch program and the breakfast programs. And so total, there you can see that we're receiving at the very bottom there approximately 13 million in revenue from that fund, the majority coming out of those two federal programs that I just mentioned, and the rest of it is from the actual paid lunches and breakfasts, which is about 2 million. I'm going to continue on. On the expenditure side of the child nutrition program, again, the majority of the funds that we spend in our school district in that program have to do with purchasing food and other items for the actual preparation of the meals. We're fortunate that our labor costs in our district are not greater than food, food costs. A lot of times, in other districts, you'll look at those, and labor costs are actually equal to or greater than the actual products that you're purchasing. And we've been fortunate for many years that they've been able to contain those costs for labor, and so, our expenditure estimate for next year is about 13 million for that fund. And in summary, when you look at the revenue and expenditures, you're going to see that there's a deficit there of about 193,000. They have sufficient fund balance to cover that, and that's another point that I wanted to make even about the General Operating Fund. At the next meeting, when, before you all adopt the budget, we're going to show you what our anticipated fund balances are going to be, so that you know that when we're adopting the budget, that you'll see it'll be far beyond what our board policy says, but you'll also know exactly how much above that. I just don't want to give you that number quite yet, but at the next meeting, we'll do that for sure. The next fund is for the debts, is for debt service, and this is the one, again, where we make our mortgage payments, if you will, for our bonds against, it's a principal and interest payments for the money that we've borrowed, so we can build our facilities. And the payments for this upcoming year are approximately 37.6 million. And again, the way we pay for that is, this is the revenue side of it, is coming mostly from our local taxpayers. You'll see that we, our local tax income is approximately 36.7 million plus that 180 plus that 75,000. So approximately 37, let's just say 37 million. And then we get a little bit of help from the state, about 600,000. So the total that we're generating in revenue is about 37.6 million or 37.7 million. On the expense side, again, this fund, you really can only charge taxes efficiently to cover your principal and interest payments, so that's why they're almost the same, and in the summary, you'll see it in a minute. One thing to note about this fund, and I think I mentioned this before at the last meeting, currently, we're at, as Mr. Macias mentioned, a dollar four on our general operating side for the tax rate. For this particular fund, we're at, we're currently at 38 and a half cents. We will be increasing the tax rate for the general, for, I'm sorry, for the debt service fund to 40 cents. And the voters authorized us to do that when they approved the bonds. It's part of the entire proposition when they approve that. So, we had told the voters, I think, we were going to increase it by two pennies, and we're increasing it by one and a half pennies. And again, in full disclosure, the only reason that's happening is because the property values went up, and so therefore, we didn't have to go up the entire two pennies. And so in summary, kind of for that fund, the revenue and the expense, we're looking at about a $300,000 deficit, but we have a very healthy fund balance in that fund as well, and so we should have no problem. And truly, once we try to do our investments and everything, we should be able to make up that 300,000 throughout the year anyway. Okay, now I'm going to start discussing these a little bit. We talked about them at the last meeting. I'm really not going to go slide by slide. I'm going to go to the ones that we have changes from the last meeting and discuss those, but if you all have identified questions on any of the others, please just tell me, and we will be happy to try to, to answer those questions. So this is for Veterans Memorial High School, what we're thinking for next year, for the last year of opening their fourth, their fourth year. This particular slide is for Escondido Elementary School, the new positions that are going to be required there, and it continues on to the next slide. Just, you know, 1.6 million there for the staff for the, for this opening. For Wortham Oaks, again, it's a new school for next year. We're opening it, although the campus is being opened half, mid-year in January, we are hiring the staff now because they're going to be, if you will, a school within a school, they're going to be housed at Rolling Meadows. So when those students enter the school year next year, they'll be with their teachers that they will be following to Wortham Oaks once it opens in January. So we're not going to be moving kids to new teachers during that time. They'll be with their teachers already, and they'll just move, move over. This is Wortham Oaks continued, at 1.8 million, more or less. Reclassification of positions, like I said, I'm not going to go through all these unless you all want me to stop. So here's the first slide where there is actually, there are actually some changes. And I said earlier, HR went through and looked at some of these positions that were, these are, these are all vacant positions, and whether or not we should hire them right now or not. And they ident, they determined that for now, we're going to hold off on hiring them, and as the year progresses and we start operating school, if the kids show up, that we're thinking are, are going to show up. And if we, we'll try to operate without them, but if for some reason we can't, then we may have to hire them either in a temporary basis or maybe half, mid-year or something. But we'll have to continue to evaluate that as we're moving forward and working with the principals and the other program folks to determine whether we're still being able to offer the students the level of education that we want to offer them without these positions. And if we determine we can't, then we will definitely make adjustments to make sure that we are offering them the correct level of education that we want and support. Continue on, yes, ma'am?
Can you help me understand which campuses we're looking at?
Oh, definitely, I'm sorry. Yes.
I see the codes, but I don't remember them any longer.
You're right. That's a, that's a, just taking our part. We should have put actual.
Thanks for asking that question.
Sure. So, the very first one, and you're going to relay test me here, but that really first one is Converse Elementary School. The next one, that 124, is Wortham Oaks. I'm sorry, yes, ma'am. So the first one is Con, I'm sorry, it's the column that is the far right-hand column, it's the very first column?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So that 101 is, is?
It's page five, page five of that one.
And don't they already have, do they have a current technology aide, or?
They, when the, as they leave, we just hold the hires, so that means that they had one and that person has resigned, presumably.
But technology is one of their rotations for specials?
Yes, ma'am. The technology aide, though, so as one of the rotations, presumably, a teacher could go into that rotation with them.
Are you going to hire a teacher to do that? Because basically, what it means is, during the first period of school, one 5th grade class goes in there during that period of school, one, the next period is for, third. So they're seeing one class from every grade level each time. That's the teacher's conference period, so there's not a teacher available to do that.
We, I, we would have to discuss that with the principals, ma'am, to see how they do their rotations, then. If that's the case, then we would probably have to keep the technology aide.
So you haven't discussed these with the principals yet?
No, ma'am. We're just waiting to see, waiting for some input.
Well, that's my input.
Yes, ma'am.
Those are, those aren't something you can cut at the elementary level, simply because those are needed to provide, I mean, we talked about, we've had a long discussion about having library in the rotation and the difficulty it causes, but you need a place for those students to go so teachers can get their 45-minute mandated planning time. So if you have a campus with five classes, you send three to PE, one to music, and one to technology, to computers. And that technology aide then is the one that works with those students and the computers. If you take away the aide, then you've got four classes in PE, and that's assuming there's only five classes at a grade level, and that's a safety hazard.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the next one down is Wortham Oaks, that 124. Do you want me to go through the ones that are not shaded as well? Okay. So 922 is transportation. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is that a typo?
Which one, ma'am? I'm sorry.
The bus monitor, 89,100.
There's four, there are four positions.
Okay, there we go, ready. Oh, yeah. Because I was just getting ready to get off the board and become a bus monitor. I mean, woo, I can do that.
Yes, ma'am. Okay. So the yellow ones, you said, right? Okay. So 124 again is, is Wortham Oaks. 104 is Coronado Village. 112 is Candlewood. 103 is Ed Franz.
This is going to be my next question. So, Mr. Garcia, these principals are okay not having an ISS aide?
Well, ma'am, I don't know if the principals are okay with holding any hires.
Correct, but they're aware that this position is going to be.
They are aware that, they are all aware that we are holding those hires so far. Yes, ma'am. The principals do know that, that they're, we're holding hires until the budget is approved.
And doesn't Coronado Village have a halftime assistant principal?
Yes, ma'am.
So for discipline, if you don't have an AP part of the day, or some of the days, where, is there, where do the kids go? And if they're younger than second grade, you can't send them home, because it's against the law, so suspend, so that.
We, we would have to come up with creative ways at the campus, because typically, principals tell us that they don't have a lot of students in ISS on a daily basis. It's not a common occurrence. And so for the 10 to 20 to 30 days a year that they would, did have someone in ISS, they would probably have to come up with a different structure for that.
Or during that time, if we could send a substitute over there or a temp person just to, or work during that time, they needed them, and then they go away.
As long as principals are aware of it.
Sure. Markel's going to go take care of the kids.
Oh, okay. Good, I'm glad.
Yes, ma'am.
But you're not cutting the ISS aide at Campus 001?
We are, we are. They're just at, right, the yell is just the changes from last time. Yes. Okay. So Campus 103 is Ed Franz Elementary School. 104 is Coronado. 117 is Masters. I want to go to the next slide unless somebody asks me a question.
I'm going to have to see those numbers.
Oh, you know why? Because, yep, we went through them today, actually, and they were not being reflected correctly in the board information we sent out last week. The campuses were wrong. So the positions are exactly the same, but we, the campuses were, they had cut and pasted those areas of the campuses. When we started asking, we said, hey, this, there was a, there was Campus 108 that you all probably see there somewhere? And it caught our attention and said, why is there a Campus 108? We don't have a Campus 108. And so when we went back to ask, it was like, oh, so we remembered those, only those positions right there that are the pre-K aides are different.
Tell me those, tell me those three again.
You bet. So 103 is Ed Franz. 104 is Coronado Village. And 117 is Masters.
And I'm assuming those are cuts because the predicted numbers have been reduced. I know that, I think they're losing one spot at Franz that we're predicting. So if we do have another class make, then we'll look at hiring the aide if those classes should make?
Yes, ma'am. That's the strategy. So, once the numbers come in and they say we do need to make another class, then we would revisit that, but better to hold off on that in case the numbers, yes, ma'am.
Are you good to keep going, or do you want me to wait for? Good. On this next slide, two changes here are that routing supervisor, and then the transportation, and the two, the FTE on the groundskeeper, there was one FTE last time, and now there are two FTEs there, two positions. At this particular one, this is a receptionist at, and 106 is Crestview Elementary School. I'm going to keep, yes, ma'am.
So Crestview will not have a receptionist? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, ma'am. The, the staffing formulas that were board-approved back in 2014, and we maintain stipulate that any campus with an enrollment under 800 would lose their reception via attrition.
So, who, who receives people that come into the school if there's no reception at the front?
They typically rotate between the secretary or clerk. They have a, a rotation system. We currently have about four or five elementaries with lower numbers that don't have a receptionist. Yes, ma'am.
The, this next slide is the new stipends request. These are all for Veterans Memorial High School, for the new positions at that school, and there are no changes from the last time we've discussed this. Now I'm going to go to the depart, to the campus, well, campus and department budgets for next year. And again, I'm only going to go through the yellow ones that are changes, and if you all want me to discuss them, you all just please stop me, and I will. Okay, so I'm going to jump to the, the first one that has a change happens to be the school board. And after the discussion we had last time, I heard different little, different comments from different board members, whether we should cut $1,000 or $1,500 or $2,000 from the travel budget for the board. Originally, or currently, the board was receiving $5,000 for travel. And so after kind of listening to what everybody had to say, I just kind of picked middle of the road, because nobody really gave me a definitive, this is what we want, we want it to be, and said, okay, well, 1,500 it is. So if we went from the 5,000 to the, and took away the 1,500, everybody's at 3,500. If y'all don't like that and you would like me to change that, please visit with Dr. Montoya and let him know and we can, or we can discuss it now. And as long as y'all give me, kind of give me a general direction that I can make changes like we did last time.
Well, I, I, I don't agree with fifteen hundred and I know why Mr. La Foil said what he said. But, you know, Mr. La Foil is a seasoned school board member and he's, says that he's gone to as many trainings and has, it's rotated that he's gotten to as many classes that he's been to and he doesn't know what else to sign up for. But we have some members that haven't, well, they went to the national this year, but may wanna go to the national somewhere else. And I just think that a thousand dollars would be just fine, wouldn't be, wouldn't be a problem with that. But I disagree with staying within the state of Texas. I think that, that part should not be micromanaged.
And, and I'll tell you that, that, we're gonna have, we're gonna discuss that in a minute cause this is one of the slides that we're gonna talk about. But those rules, US board members can decide whatever y'all like to do. Those rules that we're proposing are for the employees and not for the board. Right.
I'm glad you said that because we're not employees.
Right. And so that is up to the board to determine how y'all would like to administer your travel for the board members.
Let's put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Just remember when our last budget meeting is, Mr. La Foil, and, and we already have our agenda for this Thursday. It's the truth. It's the truth, our board meeting is Thursday. And our next budget meeting is Monday. Well, that just depends on how, how much it costs. It, it just depends on how much it costs to go wherever you go, that's all. It just depends on the registration. It depends. I disagree. Everybody else hasn't taken steps and when we're looking at this budget, we can see who has and who has not.
More have than have not.
Can you be specific please?
Well, I'd have to go through the whole budget to bring it out, but I'll do it for you.
Well, that's why we got a copy of it early enough to go through it.
I don't know what you're so worried about.
I'm okay with cutting the budget fifteen hundred. I honestly do believe that we should set the standard for what we're asking from our employees. I am one of those new board members. I do think that thirty-five hundred dollars would be ample enough to go to an out-of-state conference should I choose to do so. But I also think that since we are stopping our employees from going, that we should also be the model and find our training locally and I think, or within the state of Texas. And I think we have ample opportunity to get good training within the state of Texas.
And I totally agree with you. But I'm just saying you don't get an opportunity to network with people outside of the state of Texas. And people in other states are going through just as the same kind of problems educationally that we are.
Oh, I do my network, networking in different ways then. But, but I still think that in the difficult situation that we're in, it just behooves us as the board to be the model for what we'd like our employees to do. I remember as an employee, wondering why the board members seem to go and post about their fun trips that they had out of state. And wishing I had the opportunity to go to conferences that were not within the state. So I certainly don't want someone to say that I'm in this simply to have a fun conference. And I think that that's a, a supposition that could possibly be made.
Okay, cause you're not saying that I have said that.
Oh, no ma'am.
Oh, okay. Okay, I just wanted some clarity.
I'm saying that when I was an employee...
Cause it wasn't, it's not fun, I mean, well, it could be if you consider the classes that you go to fun. I do. I learn a lot. But I'm not going to just, you know, go on a vacation, is what I'm saying.
For some of those board members, that's how it came across. And I would never want anyone to think that this board felt that way. I, I believe last time I asked for an update on how much many board members have actually spent. Do we have those numbers? So to date balances?
I have sent those to y'all and I have one against my head if y'all would like them.
Oh, I meant for the budget meeting. I know, but I wanted to. Was there anyone who was negative?
No.
Okay. So everyone has money, cause it's gonna end obviously next?
Yes.
Next week or the thirty-first or?
Yes ma'am. Everybody has money left over.
Do you have copies?
I do.
Can I have one please?
Of just yours?
Mr. La Foil, if you, if you want everyone's, then we all get everyone's.
Right.
That's true. Do you maybe you've got any copies for everybody?
I, I don't need a copy, I just wanted to know, I just want numbers.
Yeah, everybody has money left over? Would you like me to tell you how much each person has?
Sure. Oh, wait, Betty, hold on. Oh, she turned it on, okay. Is it per, turned on? So Ms. Canoyer has seventeen hundred. Mr. La Foil has thirty-two hundred. And these are ending balances for this year. Ms. Eaton has thirty-one hundred. Mr. Macias has two seventy-two. Ms. Rodriguez has thirty-five hundred. Ms. Pashal has two thirty-eight. And Dr. Salinas has twenty, twenty-two hundred. And that is what y'all will end with the balance of at the end of this budget year.
I went to a lot of things. I got some, a lot of different training. And, and I got a lot of credit too. I talked about everyone in my training.
So based on that, if we did, if we, I mean, everybody could, would be okay with a thousand if we were gonna follow the same trend? I know it changes every year. And I know there was one year, maybe two years, maybe one year that I've been on the board where we did have to, I'm gonna say borrow money, but really transfer money. Where if Mr. La Foil has thirty-two hundred and I really wanted to go somewhere, I would ask him and we were able to transfer, right? That happened, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was kind of just waiting for the, the dialogue to stop a little bit so I could weigh in a little bit on this. I, I do concur with both Mr. La Foil and, and Ms. Pashal. Each board member trains at their own individual level. And I always tell anybody on this board, the accountability is with the community. If the community thinks we're out there having a blast at conferences, then we won't come back. I know that in all the conferences I've attended, they've been extremely invaluable in terms of the understanding that I garnered from individuals outside of the state of Texas. And when you're trying to be the best state, or best in the district, I mean, states in the east coast are rocking it. You want to talk to board members who are in the east coast that are doing some really positive things. The discussion on core, the core requirements was critical. The whole thing on internal audits, I mean, there are things that I garnered from these conferences that were invaluable to me and I, I have no regret. I will always spend my, what I consider professional development dollars so that I can be a better steward of, of finances here for Jutson ISD. And so if there comes an incident, Ms. Pashal, as Dr. Salinas had mentioned, I, I think we have a pool of money. We all allocate certain amounts, which has been five thousand recently. But I love the idea that if there is something that's happening that would be invaluable, that we should do that process of transferring. And of course, Mr. La Foil, our, our season's expert, fourteen years on the board already? Yeah, that's, that's a lot of time. Some of the stuff does become redundant, I will say that as well. But we have a two-hundred million dollar operation is the way I see it. And most boards and corporate society, they'll get that professional development. We need to have that understanding. So a compromise is important because as Ms. Canoyer had stated, we, we have to cut. And so there, that, that's something I think that's simple. I'm agreeable to a thousand if my colleagues are agreeable to a thousand and we just move forward.
Right now, if, I mean, I, I just did an estimate, it's about fourteen thousand dollars that were, I say give back, right? Not really giving back, that we had, that we didn't spend, I think, if we add everybody's up. I didn't get out my calculator, but it's approximately that. So is there any way we could split the difference? Twelve fifty? I don't know if everybody would be okay with that or not. Okay.
Well, can I ask the, okay.
Let me just say one thing, Ms. Eaton. If we don't spend it, like in the case of Mr. La Foil, he's putting back thirty-two hundred dollars roughly. In essence, he's...
Well, there's one, two, three, four, five people that put in that, not spending. There's one, oh, seventeen hundred, oh, excuse me.
One turned back seventeen hundred, one turned back thirty-two, one turned back thirty-nine, another one thirty-nine, another one twenty-two. So you aren't even, you're...
So we're, we're putting it back in essence for those board members that don't wanna use it.
But the thing is, we aren't showing any good faith to anybody out there that is taking a cut.
So when we originally discussed this, we said, you even suggested, it was your idea, a thousand. So why can't we just do the thousand? I'm just asking. I mean, it started out at seventy-five hundred, then it got chopped to five thousand, now, you know, so we, a thousand.
Well, do what you want, but I think it should be a voting item.
Well, I'm, I'm sure we're gonna do that, but sooner or later, but I just asked the question. Now, my second question is this. Madam President, so is it more difficult to have to go back if something came up to ask for money? Or it is more difficult to go back and ask for additional money as opposed to giving it back? Right.
It would be a budget transfer that we would approve for ourselves.
Okay. Because I, I would just like for us to keep in mind that I know this is, I just completed my first year. And those mandatory trainings that come with the first year that are separate from the summer and the winter session. You know, just make sure that a new board member has enough money to at least go to what's required.
I know we're not helping you.
No, you all are. I mean, it seems like, I mean, we can't take a vote, but the majority of people saying a thousand dollars, so, you know, like I said, we put a number in there based on the discussion that was had last time. We really didn't get any feedback, you know, through, through Dr. Montoya to kind of tell us what y'all wanted, so we picked a number. We can easily change it, it's not, not a big deal. We'll put it, we'll say it's a thousand dollars for next time. And if y'all don't like it then, we'll talk about it some more at that time and we'll see what y'all wanna do. Okay?
Okay.
Yes. All right, so I'm gonna continue on if that's okay? All right. The next slide or the next department that we made a change to from the last meeting was our transportation department. I'm sorry? I'm trying to think of what, what that was. Do you remember what it was? No? I'm gonna, I'll have to come back and tell y'all what that was and I'll do it at the next meeting, I'm sorry. I don't remember specifically why.
It's not highlighted on ours.
It's not highlighted on y'alls. Okay. Okay. So the next one, I'm sorry, and I'll, I'll come back to it, it wasn't a significant difference, I can tell you that. But I'll go back and look at it and explain to y'all why that happened at the last, at the, at the next meeting. The Performing Arts Center. Yeah, that's interesting. I'm wondering why. Yeah, the only thing we did with performing arts is we moved it. Cause before it was with the campuses and we moved it down to a different category area. But I know that that was the same dollar amount that was there last time. I have to apologize to y'all, I'm not exactly sure why those are highlighted. Right. It's a little bit, y'all, what y'all have is in PDF format. And this is in a PowerPoint presentation format. It's the same, it should be the identical information, it's just presented differently. As, as far as the way, cause like I said, what you have in your book is a PDF and this is a PowerPoint presentation. Just so y'all could read it a little bit easier this way. It's the same amount of money, it's just that it was moved. It, it was with the campuses and because it's really under Dr. Field's supervision, we moved it under the operations area. But the amount of money didn't change. I'm gonna go on to the next slide if that's okay? There's no change there. Okay, now this one I know for sure. This was the, the early college high school. Do y'all have the six hundred and fifty-six thousand in yours number? Okay, good. Okay, so what happened here is we went back and spoke to Dr. Gantu to please go back and revisit those numbers for the dual credit classes and what we were being charged from alma colleges. And she did, she went back and did some different estimates looking at what we were paying this year on the number of kids that we were paying this year and what she thought we were gonna be paying for next year. So the number was lowered, last time that number was more than nine hundred thousand dollar range. For this particular one, it's career in technology. This number, we increased it compared to last, the last time we talked about it. And the reason for the increase here has to do with, I think you, some of y'all will remember that when we constructed Veterans Memorial High School, one of the pathways that was added there was the print shop. And originally the first year, first, second years, we didn't have very many students in that program. So we didn't, it was gonna be expensive to, to buy all the equipment for that print shop, for the lab portion of it. So the students had been really focusing on a lot of classwork. And this, last year though, we were going to go ahead and add the print shop, the actual lab part of it, which is actually buying all the equipment so they can do a lot of printing. Now, this is a really interesting program and we'll see hopefully that it'll work as advertised. And what I mean by that is we went out and contacted several vendors and said, okay, we wanna make sure that you have, first of all, one of the foremost important things is you have a curriculum that's written that we're gonna be able to use with these students. And, and of course, modern equipment that they're gonna be able to, to actually work, work, work on. So what we did is we looked at how much money the school district was spending on printing costs, sending things out to all the printers in the community for all the things that we need. And then visited with these vendors and said, okay, this is about what we spend annually on printing things for the school district. And what our idea, and we discussed this with the board back at the time, was to bring a lot of that printing in-house so that it could be done at Veterans Memorial High School in our own print shop instead of sending it to all these little shops. There's some things we, we can't do that if there's, you know, certain testing materials and things like that, but a lot of the other stuff that we print. So we looked at the volume that we're printing, how much money we were spending. And then we visited with these vendors and said, okay, how much would it cost us for this equipment? And we really didn't wanna hire a teacher per se. So we said, all right, what if you hire somebody who, if you include a staff member, an employee that's, belongs to your company to come and teach these kids how to work on this equipment? That way you're, they're very familiar with the equipment. And it, we all kind of rolled it all into one entire package. So we had the vendors come in, make proposals to us. And Day Hill is the company that we were, that we selected. And it's about, for the first year, we budgeted about a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, I believe. The idea is that once we're in full operation within, by the second year and we have all that printing that we're doing coming in-house instead of outgoing somewhere else, that program's gonna pay for itself. And we're not gonna be spending any more money than we're spending today because we're gonna be printing all that stuff in-house. We're still gonna be charging the departments for their printing costs, but we're gonna be putting it back into that program. So in essence, when we pay for everything, we're gonna end up using the same amount of money to be able to have the equipment, that person to teach our students. The kids are gonna be learning all these things and we're still not gonna be spending any more money than we're doing today on all that printing stuff. So that's the way it's planned out. So we'll have to just monitor to make sure it really happens that way. Yes ma'am?
Would they be, I know it's a Day Hill staffer, but would they be teaching like a teacher would?
They're gonna be doing class instruction and Renee's a little bit more versed than I am, if y'all don't mind her, Miss LaFrenier, coming up. And if you have questions like that that she can address.
I just wanna know how can they do it if they're not a teacher?
If I say something wrong, clarify, correct, please.
You, in order for you to be recorded. You, in order for you to be recorded.
So, the, um, business manager would take care of the business of the print shop, and students who come into the lab to work on the production would be overseen as a supervisor, almost like a worksite. So they will be the supervisor of the students as they're applying those technical skills and working on the production of the business. But they are employed by Dayhill, paid by Dayhill, they are, however, hired with experience in high schools, so that they are comfortable and familiar working around high school students, but it is two separate positions, you can't, you can't do the, one person do
Renee, you took this ball and you ran with it. We talked about this, what, about four years ago, setting a print shop up?
Yes, sir.
And at that time, I told you, it'll pay for itself, and that's what it's doing.
Yes.
Thank you for all the work you've done on this.
You're welcome, thank you, sir.
Okay, alright, I'm gonna keep going, if that's okay? The next, um, area that's highlighted here, which I don't know if that is a, that doesn't ring a bell to me that there was any change in that particular program, yeah, so I'm not exactly sure why I highlight on the screen, but- Okay, thank you, thank you very much, cool. So, um, it's, it's not highlighted here, but it is for the two, Region 20, that ESE 20 Discovery Education is for the two new schools.
Excuse me, would you go back?
Sure.
And in case you wanna know what that is, Ms. Eaton, teachers have access to a database of, uh, video materials that they can use in conjunction with their curriculum. It's fairly easy to search, there are lesson plans that go along with it, uh, questions, quizzes that they can download and use, um, to go, uh, science, social studies, videos that can help reinforce their content.
So, if I keep going? Sure, no, thank you, Ms. Canoyer. Okay, so that's it, that's all the changes that we have on those, uh, department budgets, and I'm gonna keep going now to the next slide, yes, ma'am?
I think Ms. Eaton has a question, she needs you to go back to, um, I don't see, I don't receive the page with-
If it's just a location, if you can just tell me what department you're looking at-
It's special ed program.
It just says, um, special education?
Under special programs, or there's a different?
It's on page eighteen, Ms., um-
The two-point-five million, it's two-point-five million dollars?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, I'm, I'm-
Eight-o-three under Barra.
Yeah. It's, uh, special education?
Is that just what it's on?
Is it two-point-five million dollars that you're looking at?
Yes.
No, ma'am. That, uh, is the budget for the entire school year, for, um, the majority of those funds that are in there are to pay for consultants, like the occupational therapists, the speech therapists, employees, they're positions that we cannot, uh, hire and main, and keep in our district, because we don't pay enough money for those positions, so they, we have to, uh, outsource those positions, and co, ESM, and contract out with different companies to provide those services. Sure. Yes, ma'am?
Oh, I have just a quick question, and I'm sorry, I thought we had discussed this last time, and it's gonna go back to Wertham Oaks and Escondido. I, I know we had talked about the numbers maybe not being correct, the Wertham Oaks shows that six teachers moved from Rolling Meadows.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go back to that slide, is that okay?
Oh, sure, and then they, they have thirteen-point-five that I'm guessing they hired, that are not coming from a campus.
Go away, gosh, honey.
Sorry.
No, you're fine, let me just get to the slide so we can all kind of look at the same thing real quick here.
I know we had some discussion about this last time.
Almost there, almost there.
I apologize.
Okay, so you said, uh, Wertham Oaks going to be the first?
Wertham Oaks, right.
Okay.
So that shows six teachers that were moved from Rolling Meadows.
Yes, that's correct, yes.
Correct? Okay, and then thirteen-point-five, obviously, that we needed to hire, 'cause it's a new campus. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure. And then for Escondido, I think this is the one that we talked about, maybe the numbers weren't right, 'cause this one shows that we moved nineteen from masters and then hired
Yes, ma'am, that's-
So all nineteen came from masters?
That's correct, ma'am, because Esco-
Oh, okay.
Because it was pretty much an even split between masters and Escondido, as opposed to Rolling Meadows, which was about a seventy-five percent, twenty-five percent split.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, there were like four-hundred and something students moving from masters to Escondido versus two-hundred from Rolling Meadows to Wertham Oaks.
And Escondido's gonna have four-hundred to start?
Four-something, what's the number?
Right now, they're at about four-hundred-seventy.
Okay. Alright. Thank you.
Okay, I don't wanna make, so I'm gonna fast forward, just gonna-
Yes, I'm sorry.
Don't watch the slides too much, 'cause it'd make it busy. Let's get a quick here.
Oh, Mr.-
I was about to jump in, Dr. Svenis. Yeah, I had a few questions, um, some of these are not on the highlighted part, but I just wanted some clarification on them. They, uh, the first area would be under, um, the Dr. Cantu's, uh, budget items, and, um, I was looking at the TSTEM, the Wagner, the reduction, and you may have explained it previously, but I just wanted to just verify the information, um, a reduction of three-hundred-and-eight-thousand-two-hundred-seventy-five dollars, what's, what's happening with our TSTEM for that type of reduction?
Sure, there, last year, when the budget was turned into us, we, uh, looked at that and thought, "That's what they were requesting for one year, for startup," but then later, as the year progressed, they said, "No, that really was for the entire four-year program, it wasn't just for a one-year program." And so, um, that, that's why it's being reduced, because now they're just buying things for the second year, and then there's a little money in there to start up the third year.
So it was wrong last year?
Mm-hmm, we had that, and of course, the money's still sitting in there.
Yeah, that's interesting. Um, okay, and then in terms of the dual-credit, that's six-hundred-and-fifty-six-thousand, you mentioned earlier, savings with dual-credit, is that a result of the masters, teachers, and all that kind of stuff that we've been making arrangements with alma colleges?
That's Dr. Cantu.
Yes, the reduction, Mr. Messias, had to do, when we first did the initial projections for the dual-credit, we were looking at the courses all, uh, being taken either by our sta, being taught by our staff or by our NLC partner, our higher ed partner, but when we went back and looked and revisited, um, we included now all the UT on-ramps, and as you know, the UT on-ramp teachers will get the training, and we can increase the number of students taking dual-credit classes, and it's a little bit more cost-effective. So there was two factors that included the reduction. One, uh, we included teachers with, uh, UT on-ramps, and we identified the teachers, and we identified the number of sections that we would offer for each, um, UT on-ramps course. And then the second thing was, that we looked at, was the instructional materials, and we do have a system in place where we are tracking, uh, our textbooks, and so we're able to save some money there, instead of purchasing books again, we have, uh, books that we are accounting for and are in our system. So there was two areas that we felt that we could cut and be comfortable with it, uh, we're not cutting any services, and we're not cutting any courses, it's just we're operating in a more cost-efficient manner.
Fantastic. Where on your, my, my, where on the, um, this list would be that college prep? Is it that last one, nine-nine-nine prep, or is that a different, is that, uh, different prep?
That's a different prep, so that's the one that's with UT SA, the partnership.
So I'll, I'll come back to the UT SA one briefly, but where is the college, I mean, the SAT prep? Is it under a different administrator, or is it under yours?
It's under my, uh, purview, and you will see where it says SAT suite, including the PSAT.
Okay.
So that budget is inclusive of, um, SAT prep sessions and so forth.
So the recommendation will be for a hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand-eight-eleven?
Yes, there was no change on that one from last year, there is a slight increase to cover the cost, but it's not a significant difference.
And, so we offered prep out of that budget, correct?
Yes, sir.
What, um, what type of impact were we having in terms of students involved in that program?
I can tell you that one of the things, um, if you will recall during the school year, we were offering sessions, and we came back and, um, the board approved sessions with- The board approved, sorry, the board approved sessions with, that, you know, we provide transportation, so we provided transportation. We did not see a very big, significant difference, uh, where the numbers doubled or anything on the participation, so one of the things that we're looking at, um, and we've had numerous conversations, Mr. Heiner and I, on how do we do prep and get, you know, operate in cost-efficient and still continue to do it. So one of the things that we're looking at is, we're working with our, uh, CNI team, and we're checking to see how we can embed some of these skills in our curriculum, so instead of having a Saturday session, or instead of having, because that wasn't working very well, even though we were recruiting, and even though we were providing transportation. So we do have a couple of factors, we, we're embedding in curriculum, that's one, we also have now TSI, which is college readiness, as you know, and we do have a college prep class, uh, that we're calling college prep at each high school, we have one teacher, and we're putting all the students, we're, we're, I'm working with counselors to make sure that the counselors enroll students that are, uh, prepping up to take dual-credit classes, such as a core complete, or, um, in the early college, with JACAS, so they're making sure that they are having some sort of prep before we do administration of assessments.
Is that college prep class being funded out of that SAT suite, PSAT fund?
No, so that is in general fund, that's a teacher.
Total, because it's not even, it's not really an SAT prep, it's a college prep, which is fantastic.
That is correct.
Um, how many students do we, I mean, obviously, you don't have to have that number now, but I am interested to see, 'cause we went through two years, or if not three, with Princeton Review, we, we looked at that not being really the impact. Then we switched, and we had another group come in, and they've done the Saturday deal, and, and again, I'm hearing that it's not hitting the numbers we would like, we certainly know that students are being impacted, but to what degree? I've always been a, a big advocate for the fact that we need to build the capacity, and I'll say again, within that one-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, if we built capacity, which meant we trained our teachers to provide that SAT prep, we would give every teacher twenty students to mentor through the semester, uh, you get twenty teachers to do that, you pay a stipend, um, let's just say five-hundred dollars, I mean, you're talking about a ten-thousand-dollar program internally, um, not including the, what it would cost to train them, that's a whole different aspect of it, but ten-thousand dollars in stipends would then be paid to twenty teachers who would then mentor four-hundred students, uh, you have something that I think would be sizable and impactful, I, I, I just don't know why it's never been explored, I've been mentioning that particular concept for a few years now, and when we're talking about impact, of that one-eighty-one, how much of that went directly to SAT prep?
I can get that information for you, I don't have it right in front of me, but, Mr. Messias, I, I want you to know that we are listening to your recommendations, one of the things that we started building our teacher capacity is, for example, we brought the in-house, uh, training, um, the TSI training, you know, which is one that they need for the dual-credit, and instead of having the college offer that, we trained, uh, a group of teachers, and we have been building on that group of teachers, and so now we're doing our in-house training, as a matter of fact, the TSI summer bridge is being taught a hundred percent by our teachers that were trained, and our results are, are higher res, better results than when we've had to go through the college, so I, we are listening, um, I am listening about your SAT, and I think that embedding it into the curriculum's probably gonna be the best option, so that it, we're not trying to just recruit kids for that, it's all children, that, uh, if it's in the curriculum, all children, when they have instruction, they'll get the, uh, SAT skills that they're needing.
And then, I guess my last question regarding that, I know we have SAT days, seniors participate in that, juniors participate in that, so are we offering SAT for juniors and seniors at the present time, or is it just seniors?
We, this year, we had an SAT day for seniors, and that happens in October, and then we had the junior, uh, the juniors all test in the SAT in the spring. Uh, one of the things that we discussed through, going through the protocol, going through JET, we are gonna continue that, however, what we have found is that, um, we wanna make sure that if the students took it their junior year, and, you know, we're shooting for the a hundred percent, taking it in the junior year, and if they're happy with their results, and they're good with them, then we shouldn't be testing a hundred percent in their senior year. So what we did is, we allocated funding for those students that want to increase their performance, or wanna take it a second time, then those will be tested, so that would be a cost savings for the district, and we're still giving the opportunity to all the students.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Cantu.
You're welcome.
And then the last question would be, I think, under Ms. Barra, under special programs, um, what I'm trying to do is find out where those after-school programs that we may support funding, and our summer programs would be found. What are we spending there, and what does that look like? 'Cause those are two areas I'm really interested in.
On the summer school programs?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we do have it here, and, um, we have them at our, at our local schools, at our high schools, in our middle schools. I think the programs, the special programs that you're talking about are the extracurricular programs that are brought in from the community, and that one, uh, we really don't, they just really go through Dr. Fields's office for permission to use the facilities-
Of course.
More than anything else. We don't, we don't check their curriculum, we don't, we don't do any of that.
Okay. So, so where's that line item? How much, is that, that special program's at, that, uh, thirty-thousand-five-oh-two? Is, is that not it?
No, that has nothing to do with the extracurricular programs-
Okay.
-that we bring in from the outside.
So where, where is that, or there is no budget for that?
There's no budget for that, no, sir.
Okay, okay. So, uh, we would have to, if, if, um, one of my, my agendas would be to increase our summer programming, which means potentially having to pay for it, if we needed to bring that in, just for example, like the, the summer program for pre-engineering that we, we brought this year? Yeah, we have to pay for it, for them to come in, so in order to expand our, our menu of programs for children in the summer, I'm assuming we're gonna have to pay for it in some way, or build partnerships, so there is not a fund that we have that's set aside in our budget for that?
No, the only fund that we have is for our summer school program, for the students that need-
Sure, I know.
-summer school, for the students that need, uh, those special programs, uh, we also have it for our special ed summer programs, but we don't set aside monies for, um, extracurricular ones.
Okay. Uh, that's something for me to consider.
But we can look into it, I'm, I'm not, uh, opposed to it, but we can, uh, look into that as well.
Certainly, um, thank you for that, and then I guess, um, the after-school would probably be the same thing as well, if I'm looking for a, uh, budget for tutoring services for our children, that, I mean, aside from title money, but operational money.
That one we can provide through our title funds, because those students that are receiving, uh, those tutoring services are students that have been identified either as at-risk and qualify for our comped money, or we can qualify them through title programs.
Okay. That's all I have for now, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna slide, I'm gonna go through these slides real quick to get to, here we go, okay, there we go, okay. So there's some other, uh, considerations that we just wanted to make the board aware of, because we really haven't talked about these very much at any of the meetings, they're all on this slide, well, one of them we did, the last one on here, but the first one has to do with master degree stipends, and we wanted to kind of share with you what we're, what we'd like to do moving forward, and this is really a recommendation that came through Tasby, and it came to them really the last two times that they've came, that they've been here and done our compensation studies. The first, and what it really is saying is that we pay our employees, our teachers specifically, for, when they have a master's degree, even if their master's degree is not really applicable to the subject areas that they're teaching in. So one of the things that, um, a lot of districts are moving to is saying, "Well, we're only gonna pay you if your master's degree is in the content area that you're teaching in," and they actually pay different amounts of money and things like that, but we're trying to keep it simple by saying, first of all, we wanted to, what we currently pay is fifteen-hundred dollars per year, so we wanted to maintain that amount of money, but what we wanted to do is grandfather all our existing employees, so none of our existing employees would lose any master's degree stipend they're currently receiving. What it would do is, for any new employees that we would hire, they would only be paid the fifteen-hundred-dollar master degree stipend if they were teaching in, uh, teaching a subject in which their master's degree was in, the con, that content area. So if we had somebody who, well, I don't, I don't know, to give you an example, I think that's kind of explanatory, did the board have any concerns with us doing that, um, because it is something that we were going to put into the compensation plan, that would be presented next week on Monday for approval, um, as a change as to something that, different than what we are currently doing? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question about it, because it would have affected me. My master's degree is in curriculum and instruction. I didn't teach curriculum and instruction in the elementary school or the, or the middle school when I taught there, but I do definitely think it's an appropriate topic for a teacher. So, you know, my concern- So, you know, my concern is, if we decide to do this, are we going to err on the side of the employee rather than be hard and fast? I understand, you know, if you're a math teacher and you're, it's in math. But, there, I think there are some, the other thing that we have to consider is our employees that we're encouraging to get their administrative degree. And, you know, they're not going to want to come to us if that's their degree, or they're not going to want to get it if they're not going to get any additional money for it later on. And we've been preaching about promoting from within and making sure we have a cadre of capable leaders. So, I think this is something that maybe we need to think about a little bit longer and maybe not take effect this year.
What about an elementary teacher that teaches all subjects?
One of the, one of the things-
And they get a master's degree. I mean, they're, they teach all subjects.
Yes, ma'am. So, one of the degrees that would, we would consider relevant would be a curriculum and instruction master's degree or elementary education master's degree. I think what Tasby recommended is, would be for not receiving stipends for master's degrees like counseling or educational administration, those that aren't content area specific. So, that's, that's been the push across many districts, and that's the essence of their recommendation.
I think a counseling degree is very relevant to teachers. Having the skills that you acquire, because I have three-quarters of a counseling degree. And I'm not trying to make it all about me, but, but it does give me, I think, relevant experience to speak from. But, some of the skills that I acquired in those courses absolutely helped me with the students in the classroom management and the social-emotional development that we're required to teach. And again, if we want to grow from within, that would be a penalty then to a current teacher who acquires that degree and then doesn't get compensated for it.
My only concern with it would be to evaluate it in terms of how many real dollars are we talking about potentially saving by not pursuing this? My whole thing has always been about employee recruitment and retention. So, if we're going to recruit an employee that has a master's degree, I think that's, that would benefit our children. But, if we're talking about a minimal dollar amount, I mean, I don't know what that would look like. We could be talking about $10,000. I'm just putting a number out there. Or it could be $100,000, I have no idea. But, I do believe the incentive of a stipend is important. I do feel on, on the surface here, the relevancy of where they're teaching, we should put those teachers there. And then, of course, with dual credit, we know that there'll be a need for teachers that have master's degree to offer those courses as we move forward. So, let's bring in people with masters, but make sure we put them in the right spot. I guess that will ensure that they get their stipends. But, if I could get an idea of how many employees would be perceivably impacted by this, we should know annually how many people we're hiring with master's degrees that would fit this profile. And then, what that potential dollar amount would be, would be helpful for me to make a decision on this, or to give additional input.
Ms. Eaton.
Just out of curiosity, do you, can you hear me? Do you think that putting that stipulation there on it would limit us in any way? As far as selections, when it came time to hire teachers, and whether or not they would even apply to the district if, you know, we do something like this?
Yes, ma'am, I believe it would. As Mr. Macias mentioned, it would affect that employee who has a master's degree in ed administration, who subs, I also feel that that's irrelevant, that, that makes one a better teacher as well, to add to Ms. Canoria's comment about counseling. So, anytime we can offer stipends for teachers who are more educated, that's always a benefit. And if we remove those, it, it does affect us. But, this is, this is a Tasby recommendation and a trend that is going across northeast and just different districts. So, it's something that would align us with other districts, ideally. We would not want to give that stipend to it, but it's definitely a consideration. And, and if I may, to Mr. Macias's point about the approximate cost, we typically, we hire 200 teachers a year, about 33% of them has, have a master's degree, and, which would equate to about 67. And I would say anywhere from 15 to 20 would have a master's degree that would be considered not relevant under this, in this case, which would equate to about $30,000. But, that would, that's a recurring cost that would add every year. So, it's something to consider. It's, it's not our favorite option, like with any other cuts, but it's, it's an alternative. Yes, ma'am.
And just for clarification, that is not in our budget. The numbers that we presented, we don't have that in there, because really, what we're, what Marco was sharing as far as the numbers, it's not a, it's not a definite number. So, we really, we didn't want to budget, and it was $30,000, and we figured, okay, it's not going to make that large of an impact in the budget. So, it's not in there, just some for us to discuss. Now, this next one's a little different. Currently, our staffing formulas for our schools that, as Marco mentioned, we've been using for many, for a number of years, indicate that whenever we have an elementary school that has less than 500 students, they are to share assistant principals. So, this upcoming year, we have those schools that are listed there, Coronado Village, Escondido, Franz, Masters, Olympia, and Wertham, which are all forecasted to be under 500 students per campus. And so, the, we were going to follow the staffing formulas and hire assistant principals that were going to be shared at those schools. Different combinations, right? But, we just wanted to make sure that we didn't have any concerns from the board or any input different, because that's, and doing that, obviously, in this case, we would save hiring three? Three, well, actually, if we hired a principal for each one, assistant for each one of them, there'd be five more. But, based on that, we're going to hire three assistant principals for those that are going to be shared between those schools, there are six schools there. Then, that means we would end up hiring an additional two, maybe even three additional assistant principals, if we didn't do the share model. So, we just wanted to make sure that everything was okay with, the board was still okay with that, because some of these schools are going to be close to 500, like, they're going to be in the 460, 470 range, maybe even up to 480. But, they're not going to get a full-time assistant principal, they're going to share an assistant principal, just like as we're currently doing now.
I guess the only reservation I may have would be that any of these five, are they title campuses? And if they are, my concern obviously would be, we want to ensure that we're giving support across the board at those title campuses. I would like a dedicated assistant principal at those campuses. That would, that's just my input.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead. The information we have shows that Escondido and Wertham already hired, or have already, we've already budgeted for one assistant principal, they've already been hired, correct?
That's correct, ma'am. And so, Wertham would split with one of the schools, and Escondido would split with one of the schools with a vacancy theoretically.
So, Escondido and Masters, and Franz and Wertham Oaks?
That would be one. Now, I, I will say, as I mentioned earlier, I believe you, Dr. Salinas, asked about Escondido's enrollment. They're at 470, and it's very possible that they could cross the 500 threshold this year.
Correct.
And very, a very strong assumption that definitely by next year, they will be well beyond 500. But, at the current moment, they're at 470. But, those scenarios are a little different than Franz and Olympia, who have always been around 450. And there isn't, there hasn't been significant growth trends in the last few years that would indicate that they would cross 500 anytime soon. But, because of the subdivisions that, that are being built in the area, it's pretty reasonable to assume that Escondido would cross the 500 threshold pretty soon, if not 18, 19, definitely 19, 20.
And Coronado and Olympia already share?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And, and how many does Crestview have students?
There are approximately 600 students at Crestview.
And Franz stays pretty steady, too.
Franz has been at about 460.
Right, they stay, yeah. I would think the ones that are going to grow are Escondido, Masters, and Wertham Oaks.
Yes, ma'am. And Franz had their own assistant principal this year, because there was sort of an odd campus out, so to speak. This year, we only had three schools that met the criteria that were under 500, which is why Coronado Village and Olympia shared an assistant principal. And Franz was the, the odd school out.
I would rather, I mean, if we think we know the campuses are going to grow, then I would rather them have their own, but the ones that are pretty, like you said, I mean, some of them are, are not going to expand. Coronado Village, right? Ed Franz is not. Olympia, I don't know. But, the other ones, I would prefer them have their own. That's just my opinion, because as the house, otherwise, we're going to be hiring in the middle of the year. Right. And it's just better for consistency, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Do we not require the assistant principals to be the testing coordinator at each campus?
Yes, ma'am.
Right there tells me that we should be providing assistant principals for every campus. That's a big job. And for the principal then to step up and have to take that on, or to require the counselor to take that on, removes time that the principal could be working on the instructional leadership part of the campus, and for the counselor to be actually counseling. So, that's my concern.
Okay. Thank you all for your input, we'll discuss it.
Ms. Fisher.
Well, I, I don't know what the end result's going to be, what you're going to do, Mr. Elizondo and Mr. Garcia, but it sounds like the general consensus here is these campuses need to have their own assistant principals. And, and, and if the, if the, well, I don't know. If the testing is going to be the, going to be the deal breaker, we need to look at it from that aspect, the, the testing situation.
Don't they also do 504 and ARDS? Okay, so they're taken. Okay.
I, I think originally, the staffing formula was put in place, and I'm surmising, was based on number of students. For example, we have elementaries with 800 students and one assistant principal, and one assistant principal could do 400 and 400, so the volume was about the same, but...
Other duties are assigned.
Yes, ma'am, but, but the testing coordinator is cumbersome. Every principal would tell you that. It's not an ideal situation, but it is a staffing formula that was board-approved. But, if it's something that we want to change, I don't think there would be any objection from the principals. There might be some from Mr. Elizondo, but...
Hey, it's only money.
I can't believe you said that.
Well, you know, it's, it's, I was going to follow up with saying, that's, that's fine, but that means if we're going to hire, you know, three more people, that's almost, not quite, but $200,000. And so, it goes back to just what Marco was saying, that at the model where we used it before, Coronado and Olympia, again, I, I'm sure the APs that were working those schools would differ, but it seemed to work, because the testing was done, and that I'm aware of, we didn't have any reportable issues, right, that were reported. Now, I'm sure that they probably were asking somebody else on the campus to help out as well, that typically, maybe they wouldn't do that at a different school. Or maybe they do, maybe at some of the larger schools, they do some of that as well. But, we'll, let us talk about it a little bit. And it really does come down to a money issue more than anything, that it is expensive, and we're just trying to provide, to ensure that we're providing what we need to at each school without spending resources that we don't need to spend. But, we will definitely take into consideration everything that was said tonight, and we'll kind of see what we, we'll, we'll come back to the board and discuss it with you all some more. So, the last item on here, we have mentioned a little bit. We've touched on it before with the board, kind of the travel policy that we're going to roll out to our staff, or the employees for next school year, and that is that there will be no out-of-state travel. Now, I want to just mention that this does not include anything that involves students. If students are going to some competition or something that was, been approved, that, you know, that's totally different. This is only when an employee is going to go do professional development somewhere that, on their own, that. We were not going to allow them to go out-of-state, free out-of-state travel. They were going to be allowed to go to one conference or workshop per year, where we would pay for the hotel and the registration, but we were not going to pay for meals or mileage. And they could attend Region 20 for trainings as much as they needed to, and we would pay for registration and mileage for Region 20. And just wanted to hear feedback from the board on, on those particular, yes, ma'am.
I think it would, just my opinion, would make more sense to not pay mileage to Region 20, because that's like going to work every day, because it's here in town. But, pay mileage for the one conference or workshop. If you're testing, you're going to want to go to the testing conference, or pay the one mileage, I mean, the mileage for the one conference and not pay for the Region 20, because you could go to 15 Region 20 conferences, and then you're paying probably more than the one trip to Austin. That's just my opinion.
Careful for that input. I want to move on to the next slide, if that's okay? On this one, I think it was Mr. Macias mostly was asking for us to compare positions in our district with positions in other districts, to kind of look at the number of days that employees work at our district in specific positions, as well as others. Mr. Garcia went to the Tasby database and ran these figures from their database. And we compared, or he ran about 121 positions that were, that we could compare in their database. And we didn't include all the ones that were, where we had the same number of days. We only included on these pages the ones that were different than what we do at Judson. And so, the interesting thing about this is that we really have to do a little more research on every one of these positions, because there's a story behind some of these. For instance, if you look at that very first one that shows up on here, and these are just alphabetically, in alphabetical order, at the egg science teacher, what, we hire that person as, or those folks as a teacher, so we pay, we put them on a 187-day contract. But, then we pay them a very large stipend to make up for the additional time that they're working, for all the additional days that they work, to come and feed the animals, or do whatever else that they need to do. So, while that other district had, you know, the median for the other districts is 200 days, we would need to look to see, okay, do they provide them a stipend, do they not? And is that how they're making up for that, where we're doing it with just paying them a stipend for that? And so, it's not just as easy as saying, well, we can definitely, you know, add, you know, 12 days there, or things like that. So, we're going to take these, and throughout the year, work on, looking at each one of these and determining, okay, do some of these make sense? Now, the second one, the assistant principal for the elementary school, that one may be a lot easier to look at and say, okay, well, we have them at 202, other people have them at 207. And if you look at the high school, you know, there, if, some of these may be a little bit easier to tackle. The bus drivers, for instance, there's some, we, we do 187 days, other districts do 183 on median, but our bus drivers don't really physically work 187 days. They physically work 177 days. The reason that it's 187 is because they get, they get paid for 10 holidays. And so, things like that, and those are things that the board can look at and say, if, you know, things get really tough, can we continue to, can we continue and afford to pay for 10 holidays for this group of employees, or do we need to cut those back a few days? But, we will look at those and bring back some different bullet points for each one of them, so we can discuss. And then, we can kind of think about what changes can be made in some of these positions. And I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to give this information, it was, this was not in Board Book? Right. And we're going to send it to you all. So, we'll send this entire PowerPoint presentation to you, so you'll have exactly what was discussed tonight, because that slide before this one, and this one, and a couple, two or three others afterward, we didn't have in time for Board Book, but we wanted to share the information, because it was requested by you all. So, I'm going to go to the next slide for a minute. And Mr. Garcia did run, just to kind of, full disclosure here, he did run a little, okay, what if we added all these days that were short and subtract all these days that were over? And the net effect was right under $100,000 for all, it was 320-something that we'd have to pay more, and then we would save 200 and something, so it was right at $100,000, or the other way around. I think we actually saved about $100,000 total. But, we didn't include all that in here, because it got to be a really large spreadsheet, so we just included the more important information at this time, until we had time to analyze it a little bit more. I'm going to keep going, if that's okay? And actually, we will send this to you, and we can definitely talk about it at the next meeting, if you all like, or even beyond that, obviously.
Well, I do think this is a very good start, in terms of trying to take a look at what we're doing in terms of days and opportunities, and even possibly where we're extremely deficient and need to examine that as well. So, I think this is a great start.
Okay. So, I'm going to go beyond that now. One of the other items that I know some of the board members, I think it was Mr. Macias, maybe others, asked for as well, had to do with looking at what a pay decrease to our employees would save us if we cut maybe one day of work, or X number of days if we furloughed employees. And so, we, as I explained at the last meeting, it's kind of hard, because we have so many different groups of employees and so many different factors. So, we try to just give you some- So we try to just give you some examples, and I was going to kind of discuss them with you a little bit. So if we look at all the employees in the district that work more than 200 days, so, and none of these figures include any teachers, no nurses, no librarians, and no counselors, because those are all on the pay scale, so we really can't play with the pay scale too much. It's all these other people that are not on that teacher's pay scale that we can work with a little bit. And so these are all the people that work, usually, they're the 12-month employees, like all of us, that work all year round, and the 11-month employees, and those are the ones that usually their work contract goes into July. It's not the ones that end in June. And so what we did is we said, okay, we're going to look at all the professional staff, and there were 296 professional staff members that fell in this category. And we said, okay, if we decreased one day of pay for each one of those employees, how much would it save the district? Well, it's $98,000, would it be for one day of pay? So if you wanted to do more, you just multiply it times the number of days and it gets you your number. For the paraprofessionals, same thing, we had 146 paraprofessionals throughout the district that worked more than 200 days. And if you were to give them a pay decrease of one day, it would be $20,000 in savings. And the manual trades, there are 291, and those are like the custodians and all the maintenance employees and things like that, employees in those groups. So we have 291 employees there, and if you were to cut their pay by one day, you would save the district $35,380. Now, none of this is in our budget, the numbers that I showed you. None of these things are administrate, anything that administration is recommending, but we definitely wanted to provide the information because the board requested it. I'm going to go to the next slide, which is going to continue to give you a little bit more different of a scenario. This one, we took, one of the comments that was made at the last meeting was, okay, what about everybody who makes over $60,000? Again, we took all the teachers, nurses, librarians, counselors out of this, and we said, everybody else that's left, who are they? And so there were 254 employees, and to cut their pay by one day, it would be, it would save the district $88,000 to do that. Again, if you want to do more than one day, then you just have to take that number, multiply it times the number of days. And the other comment that was made about, well, what about the cabinet members, if we only affected the cabinet members? Well, we took all the cabinet members and we looked at, how much is it cost per day? How much would it, if we did a pay cut for the cabinet members, it would save $4,460 per day. So again, you would just take that times the number of days, and that would give you what number you're looking for. I hope that kind of gives you a little bit of information as to kind of what you're looking for, and we can discuss that if you all like.
If you take all those other considerations under, if we take all those under consideration, then what does that fund balance, I mean, that deficit number, what does that go to?
The $4 million?
Yes, sir.
If we take, and I'm sorry, Mr. Shaw, if you can clarify for me a little bit, if we take what, which considerations?
The ones that you just gave us, the master's degree stipends, the new travel policy.
Okay, the new travel policy is already.
The Region 20 trainings, all.
Right, the new travel policy is already in those numbers because we told people, you're not going to be traveling as much, so don't ask for much money there, because this is the way, you know, this is what we're going to be paying for. So that number's kind of already in there. The other number that's not in there is about $30,000, is what Mr. Garcia estimated as far as the master's degree that we would save on an annual basis. The assistant principals, if we added the assistant principals, that's about $160,000 approximately. So that would go in the other direction, so it's $130,000 net addition. And I think those are the only three things that were on those consideration sheets. So instead of being that 4.2 million seven, it would be like 4.0, almost 4.4 million dollars.
Okay, thanks.
Sure. Okay, that's all that I have for that particular presentation. There is one other information, one other piece of information that I want to share with you all that has to do with budget. Just going to go change it to a different card, a different slide. Sorry, I don't know if you all can be able to read this. Thanks. All right, so this information has to do with the health insurance for the employees. And it's one of the things that I just wanted to visit with you all about this evening as well and share with you. We contribute, there's a column there, well, I'm going to just start from the top. So we contribute about $355, well, not about, we do contribute $355 per month per employee that purchases health insurance from the school district, through the school district. And so we're not proposing that we change that number, but I wanted to just share with you what the costs were going to be to the employees for next year, and what we're thinking about doing, and just kind of seeing if you all are okay with that, or if you just kind of hear what you all think. So at the very top, the very first table, it says 2018 medical plan participant summary. There is a, on the far left-hand column, it has like different strange little names, and it has like copay next to it. Those are all the names of the different plans that we offer. A lot of times you'll see like, it'll say, health insurance, low plan, middle plan, high plan, that kind of stuff. Well, these are the names that the insurance company has for these plans. And it tells you like on the employee only, how many employees buy each one of those products. And they're all different benefit groups, so they may have higher deductibles, higher copays, things like that. It's up to the employee to decide what best suits their needs. And you'll see that that third particular product is where most of our employees are. There's a thousand, a little over a thousand employees in that one. For the employee only, an employee and spouse has 85, and employing children, 289, and so forth. You'll see that that, overall, when you look at the total participants, that out of 2,191, 1,600 employees buy that particular product. And the table right next to it just talks, gives you kind of the same information, but it's in percentages. And then a little bit further down beneath that table, there's a 2018 cost summary. And what that table shows you is currently what the premium is that the employees are paying for each one of those products for insurance. And so if you look at the employee only for that most popular item, you'll see that they're paying $117.04 cents for the employee only one of it. And if we move over to the table, that's kind of more of a yellowish oranges, I guess, orange color. It's the 2019, and this is what's being proposed by the insurance company, and it's a 5% increase over what the premiums are right now. So that same category we were talking about, you'll see that it's going from $117 to $122, and so forth. The next one's going from 551 to 579. So if you move down a little bit to the table at the bottom, that's also the orange color. That's the comparison between the 2018-19 premiums and the 20, the 2019, I'm sorry, the 2018 premiums versus the 2019 premiums. And it tells you what the increase is for each one of those. So again, looking at that third category where the most of the employees are, you'll see that the difference is $5.85 in a premium increase. And the next large group is, on that same column, that very bottom one that says $2.34, that's also where we have like 300, or at least currently, over 300, almost 400 employees buying that product. So you can kind of see what kind of increases the employees are going to have on a monthly basis in their insurance if they were to continue with the same insurance product that they currently have right now next year. And we wanted to share that with you because we've had meetings with the insurance committee, and had kind of, before they left, everybody left for the summer, said, okay, if the insurance company comes back and says, we're not going to have a rate increase of any more than 5%, is the insurance committee okay with saying, yes, let's go ahead and move forward with that, instead of going out and trying to bid everything and doing all this other stuff? And of course, like any one of us, the insurance committee said, insurance committee said, yes, that was fine. Of course, they would like better benefits, like they wanted better copays and what have you. And we understand that, but in order to do that, it's not going to be a 5% increase, it will be a larger increase. Now, our claim, our claim experience or loss ratio is doing pretty decent right now. If you look at, there's a little table there at the bottom that kind of shows you in the past, and in 2017, you'll see that it was 136.5%. And what that really means is that when you look at how much we paid in premiums versus how much the insurance company paid out to all the different providers, that at that point, they were paying 36.5% more than they actually took in. Of course, they don't like that because that means that they're losing money. So right now, for this year, as of last month, we were like in the 70%, which is good. But typically, our more, more of the claims come in during the summer, when everybody, all the teachers are out, and everybody has more time to go to the doctor, then the claims increase. So what we're really just asking the board to kind of give us a little feedback, because our intent is, because the insurance committee felt like 5% was a fair amount, it was a, not that anybody likes these amounts, but that we were just, we would just renew with our current carrier at these proposed rates and not go out to bid and ask all the insurance companies to submit new bids. So that's what we're going to do, we're going to just send them a letter saying, yep, we accept these proposed 5% increase, and go forward with the insurance. And the RFP that we have in place allows us to do that. I just wanted to see if the board had any harsh issues with it before we did something like that. And I'm open to any comments from anybody. All right, well, I appreciate you listening to this presentation, and we will move forward. On the, as Dr. Montoya mentioned, on the 25th, which is next week on Monday, we will first have a public hearing, which we will present, do a presentation so the public can have input on the budget that we're going to be proposing to the board, and the tax rate that we're going to be proposing a little bit later on. But that'll give the public an opportunity to have any dialogue that they wish to have with us. And then after that meeting, I think it's posted for 6:45 on Monday, we will ask the board to consider the budget that we are, we've been talking about. It's just going to be the same budget that we're talking about now, with a few little improvements, and I will discuss those with you at that night, any changes that we did from tonight to Monday night. We'll send out the material, of course, this week at that, for that meeting. If anybody has any questions during, in the interim, please, through Dr. Montoya, let us know, and we'll answer any questions you all have. Thank you.
Okay, meeting is adjourned at 8:11.